Welcome back to Nurses Garage. This is study session number four and we will start in with the first section. First section, what we're going to cover is gram-positive bacteria. Gram-positive bacteria are characterized by purple staining. Thus all walls tend to be thicker than those of gram-negative bacteria. About ninety percent of a cell wall of a gram-positive bacteria is made of peptidoglycan. The number of peptidoglycan layers varies, but it can be more than twenty, making a thick-walled cell. An S layer is attached to the peptidoglycan layer to protect the cell and aid in adherence. Gram-positive organisms tend to be easier to kill than gram-negative because they lack the outer wall of a gram-negative organism and they are more sensitive to penicillin, although there are resistant strains. Peptidoglycan does not occur naturally in the human body, so it is easy to recognize by the immune system as an invading organism. Some common gram-positive cock-eye bacteria include Streptococcus pneumoniae, Staphylococcus aureus, and Enterococcus. Some common gram-positive bacilli bacteria include Corynebacterium diptheriae, Listeria, Bacillus, and Threasseus. The next section is protozoa. Protozoa are single-cell microorganisms with a nucleus that live primarily off of bacteria. They share similarities to animals, but they are not. But they are also not plants. Many protozoa are free-living and are ubiquitous in soil and water. They are often divided according to their method of locomotion. These types can include flagellates, amoeboids, sporozoans, and ciliates. Some protozoa are able to form protective cysts which can survive outside the host, sometimes for long periods before transmission to another host. Protozoa are parasites to humans and cause a wide range of infections. Enteric protozoa such as Giardia and Entamoeba can cause severe diarrhea. Other diseases caused by protozoa include malaria, Chaga's disease, Babesiosis, Toxoplasmosis, Trichomonas, and Amebic dysentery. Protozoa take a huge toll of life, especially in developing countries. But some diseases such as Chaga's disease are becoming more common in the United States because people immigrate from endemic areas of Latin America. The next section covers Staphylococcus aureus. Staphylococcus aureus is a gram-positive aerobic carcass that grows in clusters. It is commonly found on the skin and the most common reservoir is the anterior nares. It is often found also in the axillae, the perineum, in irritated skin, and the mucous membranes. It attaches with surface proteins that promote colonization. Staph aureus is not susceptible to complement protein cascade, although there are antibodies that can block some receptors preventing adhesion. However, once attached, the bacteria are coated with proteins from the host cell wall and this shields the bacteria. It produces a number of exotoxins and endotoxins, including enterotoxins, toxic shock syndrome toxins, and epidermolytic toxins. Staph aureus can become extremely virulent and can spread quickly through compromised tissue. It can spread through contact with purulent material and close contact with someone infected. It is a major cause of healthcare-associated infections post-operatively, both localized and systemic, and infections from indwelling tubes and devices may also be present. There are increasingly resistant forms. This is becoming also more and more of a public health threat as well. Speaking personally, I personally have been involved in public health investigations where this was a causative factor for outbreaks from perhaps less than perfect hygienic practices during surgeries, so I know firsthand that this can definitely be an issue and can result in some very severe infections in patients. The next section covers Streptococcus pyogenes. Streptococcus pyogenes is a gram-positive bacteria carcass that lacks mobility and does not produce spores. It grows in pairs or chains and is frequently a pathogen of humans, usually causing a secondary infection after a viral infection or disruption of a patient's normal flora. Historically, Group A beta-hemolytic Streptococcus, sometimes abbreviated as GABHS, has caused purpural fever and scarlet fever. And there has been a recent increase in invasive Group A strep infections from mild pharyngitis to empedago to severe invasive infections, including cellulitis and necrotizing fasciitis. Group A beta-hemolytic strep infections are concerns for burn wounds as well as purpural and neonatal infections. It has numerous virulence factors that can cause a number of different diseases. It can colonize and multiply rapidly. It has a hyaluronic acid capsule that contains antigens similar to those of human cells. This confuses the immune system and protects it from phagocytosis. Additionally, it produces exotoxins such as pyrogenic toxin which can cause toxic shock syndrome. Sequelae can include rheumatic fever and kidney disease. Most infections involve the skin or the respiratory system. The next section covers methicillin-resistant Staphylococcus aureus or MRSA. MRSA poses a serious problem. Penicillin was first introduced in nineteen forty-two and shortly thereafter, penicillin-resistant forms started to occur. In nineteen fifty-nine, methicillin was introduced to combat penicillin-resistant Staph aureus, but within two years, methicillin-resistant forms started to be identified. Since that time, MRSA has spread throughout the world. In the United States, by nineteen ninety-nine, MRSA infections accounted for over one-third of Staphylococcus infections. Many MRSA forms are resistant to multiple antibiotics and respond only to vancomycin or other investigational drugs. And there are now vancomycin-resistant forms. People who have had invasive procedures or are immunocompromised are most often infected. MRSA has numerous hospital-associated strains abbreviated as HA-MRSA that have adapted well to the hospital environment, but community-associated abbreviated CA-MRSA forms, usually skin infections, have been isolated as well. Most hospital-associated MRSA's are caused by autoinfection in people who are already carriers with nasal carriage frequently related to prior antibiotic use and/or prolonged hospitalization. The next section is covering Streptococcus pneumoniae. Streptococcus pneumoniae is a gram-positive elongated anaerobic carcass. It may occur singly in pairs or in chains. The most common is it appearing in pairs. It lacks motility and does not produce spores. It is part of the transient flora of the nasopharynx. Strept pneumoniae is encased in a polysaccharide capsule that prevents phagocytosis. The cell wall activates the alternative complement cascade, among others, causing an inflammatory reaction and as the strept pneumoniae is destroyed, it releases pneumalysin and other cytotoxins that increase inflammation, kill cells, and can cause septic shock. The cell wall is composed of six layers of peptidoglycan and contains choline that allows it to adhere to cells with choline-binding receptors, including almost all human cells. Strept pneumoniae has a transformation system that allows it to easily mutate and develop resistance to antibiotics. It is the most common cause of lobar pneumonia in adults and there have been frequent outbreaks in nursing homes. Immunization is the primary method of prevention. The next section covers Streptococcus a. galactiae. Strept a. galactiae or Group B beta-hemolytic streptococci abbreviated as GBS is a gram-positive carcass that is part of the normal flora of the gastrointestinal system, but may colonize the urogenital system of females, although most infants, sorry, most infant infections are related to healthcare-associated infection rather than maternal transmission. The virulence factor of GBS relates to the protective capsule that prevents phagocytosis thereby allowing it to colonize and multiply. GBS has been implicated in a wide range of nosocomial infections. GBS has increasingly been a cause of infections in neonatal units causing pneumonia, meningitis, and sepsis. Meningitis can also occur in later onset, about three to four weeks after birth, with severe sequelae. GBS is also implicated in severe purpural infections, but using cultures to screen women who are infected and administering antibiotics has cut down infections. GBS infections may occur as wound infections after cesarean sections, especially in women who are immunocompromised. The next section covers treatment of the gram-positive Streptococcus cock-eye. Gram-positive cock-eye are grouped together based on their gram-stain reaction, thick cell wall composition, and spherical shape. One species of Streptococcus, Strept pyogenes, is responsible for about ninety percent of all cases of pharyngitis, of which strep throat is one form. Penicillin is usually administered quickly to avoid pneumonia or rheumatic fever. Another species, Strept a. galactiae, is also treated with penicillin and is a cause of sexually transmitted urogenital infections in females. The Enterococci, Streptococci, give rise to such diseases such as septicemia, endocarditis, and appendicitis. One species, Enterococci falcalis, causes urinary tract infections and Enterococci facium is a bacterium resistant to many common antibiotics. Strept pneumoniae causes pneumonia, meningitis, and otitis media. Patients with penicillin-sensitive strept pneumoniae can be treated with a beta-lactam antibiotic. The next section covers vancomycin-resistant Enterococci or VRE and multidrug-resistant Enterococci MDRE. Vancomycin-resistant Enterococci VRE and multidrug-resistant Enterococci MDRE have become severe cause for concern lately. VRE was first identified in the United States in nineteen eighty-nine, but by two thousand and four, it was the cause of one-third of all healthcare-associated infections in intensive care units related to the use of vancomycin. There are several phenotypes, but two types are most common in the United States. Van A, which is resistant to vancomycin and ticoplanin, and Van B, which is resistant to just vancomycin. VRE infections are treatable by other antibiotics, but MDRE infections are increasingly resistant to two or more antibiotics, including vancomycin. Restriction of vancomycin use alone has not proven successful in controlling the development of VRE or MDRE because other antibiotics such as clindamycin, cephalosporin, aztreonam, ciprofloxacin, amino glycoside, and metronidazole are implicated. Prior antibiotic use is present in almost all patients with MDRE. Other risk factors include prolonged hospitalization and intra-abdominal surgery. The next section covers Entrobacter. Important nosocomial pathogens responsible for various infections. Entrobacter cloacae and Entrobacter aerogenus rarely cause disease in a healthy individual and are seldom seen in community outbreaks, particularly lethal among very young and very old hospitalized patients and those already suffering from serious underlying conditions. The average mortality rate is estimated at twenty to forty-six percent and possibly higher. Risk factors for nosocomial Enterobacter species infections include extended hospitalization, an invasive procedure within the last three days, treatment with antibiotics in the past month, and a central venous catheter. For infection with a nosocomial multidrug-resistant strain, specific risk factors are the recent use of broad-spectrum cephalosporins or amino glycosides, and ICU care. Certain antibiotics, particularly third-generation cephalosporins, should be avoided because resistant mutants can appear quickly and multiply. Antibiotic resistances complicate management of the infection. The source of infection may be exogenous or via colonization of the skin, gastrointestinal tract, or urinary tract. The next section covers Entrobacter. Entrobacter are gram-positive facultative anaerobic cock-eye that usually occur in pairs. Only a few of the twenty-one species cause human infections. Entrobacter are part of the normal flora of the GI tract, which is the reservoir for most nosocomial infections, but they can also be found on the skin, in wounds, and in chronic decubitus ulcers. Entrobacter used to be classified as Streptococci because they look similar. Entrobacter falcalis causes sixty to ninety percent of infections and Entrobacter facium causes five to sixteen percent. But Entrobacter facium is of increasing concern because it has developed vancomycin-resistant strains. Entrobacter are difficult to treat because they are intrinsically resistant to numerous antibiotics, including penicillins and cephalosporins. Additionally, they have acquired resistance to many others, including tetracyclines and vancomycin. Infections include urinary infections, bacteremia, endocarditis, as well as infections in wounds, and the abdominal and pelvic areas. Person-to-person transmission is common in nosocomial infections. The next section covers Campylobacter jejuni. While seldomly deadly, Campylobacter, being the most common cause of diarrhea in the United States, is the cause of considerable amounts of misery. Of some one hundred thousand who contract it yearly in the United States, only about a hundred people die. It can sometimes occur in outbreaks and there may be long-term consequences of an infection. Some people may have arthritis following an infection of Campylobacter. Others may develop Guillain-Barre syndrome, a rare autoimmune disease that affects nerves throughout the body beginning several weeks after the diarrheal illness. Paralysis that may last several weeks usually requires intensive care. As many as forty percent of Guillain-Barre syndrome cases in this country may be triggered by Campylobacter, usually as a result of eating or handling raw or undercooked poultry meat. An outbreak in nineteen eighty-eight was caused by milk that had been improperly pasteurized. Campylobacter usually presents with diarrhea and fever, vomiting, and abdominal pain, and persists for seven to twelve days. Treatment in complicated cases can be achieved usually with levofloxacin, five hundred milligrams orally for three days or until symptoms improve. The next section covers Clostridium botulinum. Foodborne botulism is a toxin that's destroyed if heated at eighty degrees Celsius for ten minutes or longer. The heat-resistant spores of Clostridium botulinum can produce, however, a deadly neurotoxin in poorly-processed foods, with most of the outbreaks reported annually in the United States from ten to thirty associated with home-canned foods. Occasionally, though, commercially-produced foods are at fault, with canned meat products, canned vegetables, and canned seafood products being the most frequent sources. A victim must be treated immediately upon ingestion with an antitoxin. Otherwise, there is an elevated chance of death. The organism and its spores occurs widely in soils as well as streams, lakes, and ocean sediments, intestinal tracts of fish and mammals and the gills, and viscera of crabs and other shellfish. It also appears in honey, which is definitively linked to infant botulism, but not in any case involving adults. Foods would not be involved in the botulism infection if this was actually found in a wound instead of a food that was ingested. That would result when the botulinum has infected a wound. It's producing the toxins and then the toxins travel via the bloodstream to infect other body parts. Treatment options include gastric emptying of food that is remaining in the stomach, treatment with an antitoxin, trivalent antitoxin as per the CDC, supportive care, including mechanical ventilation if necessary. And for infant botulism, BABIG or BABIG, which stands for botulism immunoglobulin, is also available. There is often a severe cost with these treatments and sometimes public health will need to sign off on the actual treatment. The next section covers E. coli. Is a group containing four classes that cause gastroenteritis in humans, the most familiar being E. coli CER group zero one five seven H seven. It's a normal inhabitant of the intestines, suppressing the growth of harmful bacterial species and synthesizing vitamins. However, some varieties have gone bad by producing large quantities of one or more toxins, causing severe damage to the lining of the intestine. This produces hemorrhagic colitis with its severe cramping and bloody diarrhea. The illness usually self-limiting lasts for an average of eight days. Undercooked or raw ground beef has been behind many of the documented outbreaks, but also cited have been alfalfa sprouts, dry-cured salami, lettuce, unpasteurized fruit juices, game meat, and cheese curds. Young victims may develop hemolytic uremic syndrome abbreviated A. Young victims may develop hemolytic uremic syndrome, abbreviated H U S. This can produce permanent loss of kidney function. H U S is combined with two other symptoms, fever and neurologic distress. To make up the condition, thrombolytic thrombocytopenic purpura abbreviated T T P, having a mortality rate in the elderly as high as fifty percent. The next section covers Vibrio cholerae serogroup one. Unsanitary conditions pollute waters providing the breeding grounds for Vibrio serogroup one. The bacterium responsible for epidemic cholera. Cholera reported in nineteen ninety-one in Peru grew to epidemic proportions, spreading north to Mexico, infecting one million ninety-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-two and killing ten thousand four hundred and fifty-three. It was only the cholera. It was the only cholera epidemic in the Western Hemisphere in the twentieth century. The last major outbreak in the United States was in nineteen eleven. But sporadic cases reported between nineteen seventy-three and nineteen ninety-one suggest that strains of the organism may now be found in the temperate coastal waters surrounding the United States. Ingested viable bacteria attach to the small intestine and produce cholera toxin. Dehydration and loss of essential electrolytes will eventually bring death. Individuals infected with cholera require rehydration, either intravenously or orally, with a solution containing sodium chloride, sodium bicarbonate, potassium chloride, and dextrose or glucose. The illness is generally self-limiting. Antibiotics such as tetracycline have been demonstrated to shorten the course of the illness. The next section covers Listeria monocytogens. Listeriosis caused by Listeria finds expression in encephalitis, meningitis, and septicemia. It is also a factor in intrauterine or cervical infections in pregnant women. It can lead to stillbirth or a spontaneous abortion. It has been associated with consuming raw or badly pasteurized milk, raw meats of all types, ice cream, and uncooked vegetables. Cheeses, raw and cooked poultry, fermented raw meat sausages, and raw and smoked fish are thought to be other sources as well. It can grow in refrigerated foods. Listeriosis is effectively treated with penicillin, ampicillin, or a trimethoprim sulfa methoxazole. Onset to GI symptoms may take more than twelve hours, whereas the time to serious forms of listeriosis may range from a few days to three weeks. At least sixteen hundred cases of listeria result in four hundred and fifteen deaths per year in the United States overall, and attribute to the bacillus ranges from fifty percent septicemia to as high as seventy percent listeria-related meningitis. It may go beyond eighty percent in perinatal neonatal infections. For infections during pregnancy, the mother usually survives. The next section covers Shigella. The illness caused by Shigella or Shigalosis accounts for less than ten percent of the reported outbreaks of foodborne illness in the United States at estimated three hundred thousand cases. Infants, elderly, and the immunocompromised are usually going to be the severest hit for the disease. But all humans are susceptible regardless of their age to some degree. Now fatalities from Shigella may be as high as ten to fifteen percent with some of the strains. And Shigalosis is a very common problem that is suffered by individuals that have AIDS. The organism is frequently found in water that's been polluted with human feces. The infection, which requires as few as ten cells of the Shigella bacteria, depending on the age and the condition of the host, is characterized primarily by abdominal pain, cramps, diarrhea, fever, vomiting, as well as blood, pus, or mucus in the stool. Shigella is transmitted from the fecal-to-oral route from any contaminated food or water that occur and occurs primarily in children. The youngest of age are usually the hardest hit from six to thirty-six months. So six months to three years of age. This is characterized by bloody diarrhea, abdominal pain, and fever. This is sometimes difficult to get a quick diagnosis because of the inability of the children to relay their symptoms. Now, the treatment for Shigella should be tailored to the cultures that have been tested. But to use fluoroquinolones once daily for three days while waiting for culture results. Or a trimethoprim sulfa regiment. Recommended is T M P eight milligrams per kilogram and S M Z forty milligrams per kilogram per day, given orally in two divided doses every twelve hours for five days. The next section covers Pseudomonas aeruginosa, which I will just abbreviate to Pseudomonas. It is an opportunistic pathogen, exploiting breaks in the host's defenses to initiate a urinary tract infection, respiratory system infection, dermatitis, soft tissue infection, bacteremia, bone infections, joint infections, GI infections, as well as other associated infections. This type of infection is particularly active for patients with cancer, cystic fibrosis, severe burns, or AIDS. And this disease has been seen to have a fatality rate as high as fifty percent in some of these patient populations. Accounting for approximately ten percent of all healthcare-associated infections, Pseudomonas is the fourth most commonly isolated nosocomial pathogen. Only fluoroquinolones, gentamicin, and imipenem are effective against it, assuming that they're not resistant. And even these drugs are not effective against all strains. The futility of treating Pseudomonas infections with antibiotics is most dramatically illustrated in cystic fibrosis patients. Virtually all cystic fibrosis patients eventually become infected with a strain. So resistant that it cannot be treated. And unfortunately, death is usually the final outcome. Now, the next section I'd like to cover is something that I worked with quite extensively extensively here in Genesee County in Michigan. And that is Legionnaires' disease. Now Legionnaires' disease is kind of a emerging public health crisis. It is something that the Legionella bacteria that we are concerned about causes pneumonia. And this pneumonia needs to be treated with specific antibiotics. If it is not treated effectively, it does not resolve usually on its own and can have some pretty severe outcomes with a lot of patients passing away from it. It's continuing to be found more and more in different areas of the United States where hospitals finally agreed to do more testing. And there's a saying with Legionella, and that is, if you look for it, you're going to find it. So if you test water, you're going to find it. If you test people with pneumonia, you're going to start finding it more. The more testing, the more you're going to find it. So a little bit of a backstory. At an American Legion convention in nineteen seventy-six, one legionnaire after another became ill with an acute pneumonia-like illness. Out of two hundred and twenty-one who were ill, thirty-four of them died. A CDC investigation later ensued to track down the cause, and they found the bacteria Legionella. It thrived in the convention hotel's cooling tower from which the bacteria were pumped around through some ineffective cooling systems in the building. This led to new worldwide restrictions requiring more stringent cleaning for cooling towers and large-scale air conditioning systems. It's kind of changed everything all over the world after finding that out. Now, one key thing to point out right here, and that is, even though it was found in a cooling tower, which is kind of like a device you could think to spray misting water over an air conditioning unit to cool it, it's not in the air conditioning unit itself. So if somebody says, I'm worried about Legionella from an air conditioning unit, it is not the air conditioning unit that is going to be spreading it because the air conditioning unit is going to be drying and dehumidifying the air, not providing a vehicle for transmission. But in this case, having a misting or a cooling tower would be the perfect environment because if it's not treated, doesn't have a high enough chlorine content, it's going to be perfect breeding ground for Legionella. Now, since nineteen seventy-seven, some forty-odd species of Legionella bacteria have been identified, and that's counting. You know, it's going up as we go forward. Some sixty-odd serogroups have been characterized of those species. And one of them is the one that we're usually concerned about here in the US, and that's Legionella pneumophila. Legionella pneumophila is responsible for about eighty percent of the cases where someone gets Legionnaires'. And among its thirteen serogroups, serogroup one is responsible for virtually all the cases. So that's what we're mainly concerned about is serogroup one of Legionella pneumophila here in the US. The Legionella bacteria are widely distributed at a low concentration, flourishing in both warm and cold water from lakes to showerheads. They cause disease only if inhaled and able to set up shop in the lungs. When a single case of laboratory-confirmed healthcare-associated Legionnaires' disease is definitely definitely identified, or if two or more cases of laboratory-confirmed possible nosocomial Legionnaires' disease occurs during a six-month period, the CDC recommends that local or state health departments or local county health departments or the CDC be contacted and combined to form an epidemiological response as well as an environmental response and investigation to be conducted to try to determine the source. If the evidence of continued nosocomial transmission is not revealed by retrospective evidence, an intensive prospective surveillance should be continued for at least two months after the date that the surveillance was initiated. If evidence of continuous healthcare-associated transmission is present, you should save and subtype isolates of Legionella species you should obtain from patients as well as the environment. You should also collect and analyze water samples from potential sources of aerosolized water in the environment. If a source is not then identified after these analyses have taken place, you should continue the surveillance for new cases for at least two months. And depending on the scope of the outbreak, decide to either defer decontamination depending on identification of the sources of Legionella, or proceed with decontamination of the hospital's water distribution system with special attention given to the specific hospital areas involved in the outbreak. You should, of course, decontaminate any source of infection that is found. Now, as far as the CDC recommendations where they were for what to do upon finding evidence of healthcare-associated Legionella in the hospital's heated water system or cooling system, got some points to make here. When a heated water system is implicated in Legionnaires' disease, decontaminate it either by running superheated water through the system or by hyperchlorinating it. Post-warning signs at each outlet being flushed to prevent scald injuries to patient staff or visitors. Clean the hot water storage tanks and water heaters to remove accumulated scale and sediment. Restrict immunocompromised patients from taking showers and have them only use sterile water or bottled water for their oral consumption until Legionella species becomes undetectable by cultures of the hospital's water system. If cooling towers or evaporative condensers are implicated, decontaminate the cooling tower system. Collect specimens for culture at two-week intervals for three months. When Legionella species are not detected in cultures during that period, collect cultures monthly for another three months. And install drift eliminators on operational cooling towers. If this is not already been done, and regularly use effective biocide for cleaning. Whenever there's a new construction, they should design and place cooling towers so that the tower's drift is minimized and directed away from the hospital's air intake system. Now, when it comes to Legionella, guidance has been updated through the CDC first something called ASHRAY one eighty-eight. You can always search for that. ASHRAY one eighty-eight gives great guidance for healthcare facilities, what to do when responding to Legionella. And guidance, now, some of the information has been updated from this. But I would definitely start with up-to-date CDC guidance for Legionella as it updates as the science does. Some other things about Legionella that I'd like to mention here might circle back to Legionella in the future. But when we look for an incubation period for Legionella, it's usually going to be between ten days or fourteen days. There is various research that's been done on this. I know the common is, you know, going to be around that four-to-six-day period. Now, to get Legionella, to have it set up in your lungs, you're usually going to have to have some sort of a previous history of smoking. It's just, you know, something that we have always seen, identified in most cases, not in every case, but virtually all cases have a history of smoking as well as comorbidities such as diabetes. So keep that in mind. Other things about Legionella. Legionella is an intracellular pathogenic agent that replicates within monocytic phagocytes, depending, of course, on the availability of iron. And also it replicates within alveolar macrophages. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. It replicates within also alveolar macrophages. And both antibody-mediated, which can result in long-term resistance, and cell-mediated immunity responses occur. and cell-mediated immunity responses occur in an effort to combat the infection. Legionella colonizes water distribution systems because it can survive chlorine treatment by living in the biofilm, which we already covered. It grows well in hot water tanks that are under a lethal temperature. So if the water is good for a warm bath, it's perfect to grow Legionella. But that doesn't mean it can't grow in ice machines or water. It certainly can, but just not as well or as fast as in warmer hot water. That is not too hot. Now also air conditioning systems again are not gonna be spreading it. And nosocomial infections correlate with the use of things like ventilators, intubation, nasogastric tubes, especially using tap water instead of sterile water to cleanse equipment or to refill humidification for equipment. The most common infections are paniac fever, which is a flulike condition where you get the Legionella bacteria, you develop a fever, kind of like symptoms of a flu, but you do not develop pneumonia. The other option is that you develop pneumonia, which can lead to dissemination of the pathogen throughout the body, potentially causing multi-organ failure. There's a lot of other side effects and potentially organ-damaging effects of Legionella, but I'm just gonna leave this here for now, covering Legionella. And I think that's gonna be it for this audio lecture and we will pick up again here in the next one. Thank you.